Are you ready?
Everybody else ready?
Oh.
Good.
Well.
Is the voice ready?
Apparently not.
Apparently not.
He's busy. I hear her.
That was interesting.
You under the desk?
Was that recording in progress?
Yeah, very faint though. Fonda, can you hear us? Okay. Okay, I think we're.
Are we okay, even though we can barely hear that? All right.
Yeah.
Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Slate Camp, Luke Amit, Amelia Boyd, Ben McCran, and Nick Palito. Commissioner Mo Stunkel is absent at this time. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice.
Thank you. Just a quick announcement that there is upgrades being in process of the sound system here in council chambers. Without any public here at this meeting this evening, I will not go into the details, but everybody can be aware that we are making some improvements to the sound system here. Are there any general announcements from Commissioners or from city staff?
I just wanted to remind the Commission of the Housing and Neighborhoods workshops. Those will be next week, Wednesday, October 26th, 1:00 to 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And the same workshop will then occur Thursday, October 27th. That one is going to be from 11:00 to 5:00 o'clock in the Tango Cafe Community Room at the Columbia Bank Building.
And what's the nature or what's the format for these meetings? Are they just drop-ins or are they, is there formal presentations at any point?
There are no formal presentations. It's informational and gathering.
Gathering, the public feedback. Excellent. Thank you.
I'd like to just add that I participated in that training yesterday in Court Lane with Amy, Jennifer Stapleton, and Kate McAllister, and that was a fantastic exercise of city planning type stuff. So if anybody is interested to hear more, I'd be welcome to talk to you about it after.
Okay, we could certainly put it on the agenda for a future meeting, even if you would like. Yeah, yes, good idea. Excellent.
I need some Legos. Right, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, any other general? I'll just mention too as well, I know this past week I went to the, to the recreation meetings concerning Sand Creek Watershed. I don't know if anybody else attended that where they were looking at, and there was representatives from the International Mountain Bike Association where they're looking at recreational, adding recreational trails to the city watershed. It was fairly well attended. Okay. Well, next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes, and you may notice here that last time, I think I was presiding remotely, and therefore we had some issues with hearing who was saying yes and no to the minutes. So we're reapproving the, the minutes from the September 20th meeting as well as the last meeting as well. But at this time, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 20th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Excellent. And to keep things clear, I guess we will do a roll call vote, so.
Commissioner Palito?
Yes.
Commissioner McCran?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Omot?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Motion passes and the meetings are approved. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 4th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And again, we shall do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Omot?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Palito?
I wasn't here, so I don't know if it's appropriate for me to.
You may still vote.
I may still. Okay, okay, then yes.
Commissioner McCran?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Motion passes and minutes are approved. Old Business is our next item, and we're looking at a overview of and input on the comprehensive plan draft chapters. And I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an introduction of this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we're continuing review of draft chapters. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing a draft of Chapter 9, Jobs and Economic Development, and Chapter 11, Natural Resources and Hazardous Areas. We have with us Marion McGulberry from Logan Simpson, and I am going to turn the presentation over to her.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you Commissioners for having me tonight.
Marion, we can't hear you.
Oh.
Our audio is very faint.
Can you hear me now?
Very, very little.
Very little. I can hear her loud and clear.
Yeah, something to do with our room audio. That's about the volume we were hearing from the.
The voice.
The voice.
Marion, can you speak again?
Yes, can you hear me?
We cannot hear you, unfortunately.
Wow.
Do you want to try off and logging back on?
I think it might be the system.
Oh.
Fonda, you can hear me okay.
Right? Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
We are working to overcome our technical difficulties.
Take your time.
Marion, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
We cannot.
Is it getting worse?
A little better.
Yeah, a little better.
Very faintly in the background. If you scream through your entire presentation. We heard that. Thank you.
Jobs and economic development! I mean, it is very exciting sections of the plan.
Sources only coming through the monitor versus the speakers in the room.
Right.
And if that's the case, do our monitors have volume buttons on them? It does not look like it.
I don't want to touch it. There's something on the right, but it's something, but it's. I don't know what. Well, that picks it.
Should I save full listens here? Oh. I don't.
I was just curious. If you sent us the Zoom link and we logged on on our laptops, would we hear things then?
I don't know. Although I don't, can I forward my Zoom link?
Marion, could you say something?
Yes, testing, testing.
Okay.
Better and better.
Yeah, just one of us joins maybe the microphone.
Yes, good idea. You want to send? Do you have the link there?
I, yeah, I can try forwarding this. I don't know that my forwarding will work, but. And up there, the middle ones, they said, were turned out.
Are you sending me the link? We'll see if that works.
Just forwarded it to you.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
That was interesting.
So I'm in.
Are we getting the, oh, you got the link?
Yeah, what if? Marion, can you say hello to us?
Hello!
You pull your, did you hear that there?
I hear you.
And that's, that's.
We have to turn the house speakers. Otherwise, you just won't get that feedback through. And we're gonna have to listen to his laptop.
Marion, can you say something?
Hello again.
Now we can't hear anything. Let's see.
But we can hear. His laptop.
Is that feedback he doesn't back?
Okay, John.
So just take, take the mic away, can we just hear it? Take the mic away, so that it doesn't, it doesn't feedback through. Can we just listen to you?
So further? I wonder if that would take away the echo.
Is that what we're, is that what we're saying?
We don't speak in here. There's no feedback.
But a serious echo. Well, we could listen. Let's, let's attempt. We will listen to your presentation and we will hold discussion until later.
I didn't have you. Questions?
Yep. Let's give it just a rough first try.
Okay, well, I'll share my screen and see how far I can get.
Fonda, can you hear Marion okay?
Get everybody here.
Okay, so let me know, flag me down if you can't hear me or if there are remaining audio issues. Otherwise, as Amy mentioned, I'll walk through an overview of the content and direction that is in Chapter 9 and Chapters 11, Chapters 9 and 11, focusing on jobs and economic development and natural resources and hazards. So Chapter 9, Jobs and Economic Development Chapter, this, as you know, we had a version of it drafted a couple of years ago. We have taken a fresh look at this to really make sure that it aligns with the recent housing and economic analysis done by Leland Consulting Group, and that report, I think, has been finalized. Otherwise, remaining changes will be minimal, it sounds like. So we made sure that the content, the direction, and the recommendations from that plan were embodied in the context as well as the draft goals and objectives. So I assume that this commission has seen that, that plan, that report is relatively familiar with it. I don't want to necessarily go into detail of, of what that report included or what sections of that that we pulled out for the, the context of this chapter, knowing that you've, you've recently spoken about it. So just to give you a high level understanding of, of what that context is for Chapter 9, we go through a discussion about labor force, understanding that Sandpoint is a an in commuter community, so we have more jobs in town than we have residents having those jobs. So you can see the graphic on the right. Only about 1,700 folks live and work in Sandpoint. We have another 5,000 workers that commute into Sandpoint every day and 2,000 that commute out. But all in all, average travel time to work is about 16 minutes, and half of workers that live in Sandpoint are within a 10-minute commute of their jobs. So I would also note that Sandpoint's residents are in line with the national averages for educational levels, even though there has been some, at least a couple of years ago, there was a kind of a discussion that it was attracting higher wage earners and higher, the higher education levels into the community. Also noting that there is high tourism and hospitality sectors, and we'll get into those industries a little bit. But it, it brings to mind the issues of fluctuating job and seasonal fluctuations between high and low seasons for that industry. So looking at household income, there is a lower income in Sandpoint than some surrounding communities in Bonner County households. There is a discrepancy between the new residences' average household income versus longer-term residents, which is at a little bit lower. And there was a 15, there is a 15% of the community of residents in Sandpoint that live at or below the poverty line as defined in the 2020 census. That's a little bit lower than we had in 2010, so positive trajectory for that. And I want to mention that the house, the, the graphic here on the image, median household income is different than average household income, so that's why those numbers are a little bit different. So looking at industry, healthcare remains Sandpoint's largest employment industry. We also have high manufacturing and hospitality and leisure industries as well in terms of number of employees. And wholesale and logistical industry is actually rapidly growing. As we all know, online commerce is changing the face of, of retail right now, and so it's no surprise that that is growing indeed. And of course, the hospitality and leisure industries are a little bit lower-paying sectors and, and related to those high seasonal fluctuations with some temporary workers. So there, that is something to consider here. In terms of economic growth prospects, most of Sandpoint is actually a federally recognized opportunity zone. And there are a number of, of prospects that, that point to economic growth, continued economic growth for Sandpoint. There is a need to retain that competitive edge as Idaho communities are becoming increasingly interdependent. And Sandpoint is the, the county seat and the hub for, for Bonner County in many ways. There is a lot of quality of life aspects and amenities that Sandpoint has that attract businesses and workforce, make it a favorable place for businesses to relocate to, not only with infrastructure, recent broadband infrastructure, education, healthcare providers, and the vast recreational opportunities in the region, but also the access to Highway 2 and 95 make it a great location in terms of regional connectivity. So on the right side of the screen, you'll see some of the, the, the components that we're looking at for the types of business, businesses that would likely be attracted to Sandpoint include professional service businesses, small and medium-scale manufacturing firms, residents and tourist service providers, retirement services, and remote workers. And I think with, you know, the recent pandemic, some trends are that a lot of people are moving to where they want to be if they can work remotely. And so the broadband backbone in Sandpoint is really going to give it an edge in that way. So in terms of the goals and objectives that we have in this chapter, focuses on a handful of goals. This one is economic health, really focusing on a bright, vibrant, diverse, and resilient year-round economy in Sandpoint. And this includes trying to offset a little bit of those seasonal fluctuations. So maintaining a diversity of industry clusters that will allow Sandpoint to become more resilient through economic hardships or those fluctuations in growth. Supporting existing businesses, encouraging localism and innovative techniques to circulate dollars within Sandpoint's local economy. Looking at targeted businesses and industries to enrich the tax base, especially looking at high-quality jobs and high-paying, high-wage earner jobs. And then, of course, making sure that we have the land use that can accommodate businesses that want to relocate or expand in, in Sandpoint. So the mix of commercial, industrial, and office uses, and preserving that, that economic sectors with the medium and high-wage jobs. Economic innovation, this is a, I want to say, a kind of a backbone of how Sandpoint has grown economically in the last decade. Innovation and attracting innovative industries is, is, has a foundation in Sandpoint. So this goal is, innovation is encouraged with an entrepreneurial spirit to embrace the next generation of industry technologies and workspaces. And so how that translates, translates to objectives is making sure that we have a diverse mix of workplace types. So looking at the flexibility of office, co-working spaces, incubators, maker space, small business, remote worker, and startup spaces. It is also geared toward promoting businesses that are related to natural resources and the outdoor recreation that attract a lot of these businesses or, or a lot of workforce to the area. And particularly businesses that use sustainable practices and continue to develop those outdoor recreation opportunity infrastructure in, in Sandpoint. It includes development of businesses, jobs, and programs that focus on renewable energy, clean technologies, waste reduction, recycling, so some of those kind of sustainable development goals. Support business growth with innovation, research, development, and emerging technologies. We can already see that reflected in some of the, the, the businesses we have in town. And in its support, infrastructure investments included to, or excuse me, related to high-speed internet access. So again, that broadband backbone is going to be really key. The final objective here is support educational institutions, trade schools, nonprofits. This is really intended to provide that workforce training and job placement service that can help encourage and promote that innovation with the workforce. Regional economy goal here, strengthen Sandpoint's place in the regional economy through coordination and collaboration with neighboring cities and counties. This, as you can see, just with the verbiage in the objectives here on the right, it's, this is very geared toward collaborating, coordinating, and really working with local and regional partners, not only for economic development, but to bring in the, and strengthen the infrastructure, the educational opportunities, the transportation to get workers to where they need to go. So commuting, 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 excuse me, and redundant infrastructure there. This also has a, across, or a kind of a hyperlinked policy to look at Sandpoint Airport as an economic driver in the region, so we can look at that chapter as well. And then strengthening the partnerships and coordination with the Schweitzer Mountain Resort. The final goal here in this chapter is looking at downtown, really as a heart of, of the region, economic, social, and cultural center of Sandpoint. And I didn't include a lot of that in the, the context, but it is, it is woven throughout all of these chapters that downtown Sandpoint is, is a focus for this plan, not only with what kind of businesses are, are supported in downtown, but how it can be a vibrant cultural space. You know, we have a section in there, I think Chapter 4, there was the community design and, and identity that had a strong downtown aspect. And so this goal and objective, set of objectives really focuses on what makes downtown Sandpoint that economic driver and continue to be a strength for the, the local economy. So focusing on collaboration with the Urban Renewal Agency and the, the businesses downtown cultivating that active and vibrant street light with, with regard to outdoor seating, parking, sidewalks, transit availability. Encouraging a diverse local restaurant and retail on the ground floor, so encouraging mixed use, but having that engaging ground floor business. A healthy mix of active downtown uses, so not just civic, a cultural entertainment lodging, retail office. We really want to make it a mixed-use, a healthy mixed-use area. Partnerships with local organizations and businesses to host events, so to bring people downtown, not just to, to eat at a restaurant, but for, for special events. Incorporating creative placemaking into new development and redevelopment projects, and that can look differently depending on what that redevelopment project is. But creative placemaking builds a sense of, of place. So whether that's public art, whether that's streetscape design, or, or public space to, to gather. And encouraging temporary or short-term uses in town to activate vacant storefronts, whether temporary or more long-term. This, this could be pop-up restaurants, pop-up retail events, food trucks. I've even seen, you know, the town take over a vacant storefront for kind of a, a civic hub for community events. And then the final objective here is to facilitate public transportation and non-motorized transportation connections between downtown and neighborhoods. So that is the final, the last goal for Chapter 9. And I wanted to maybe, instead of just plowing through into Chapter 11, if there were any questions about this chapter in particular, jobs and economic development, I would be open to answering and clarifying anything that the commission has.
We're all afraid to talk. We do get a lot of feedback and echo, so, but are there questions? Comments?
I don't have any at this time.
Only one that came to my mind is in goal 2F, just because it had been something on my mind prior, and I saw the, the phrase "support trade schools." Certainly something that Sandpoint has need for now is some sort of technical schooling to go on here to meet some of those extreme trade deficits, skills that we have. And I don't know if there's stronger verbiage we could put in there rather than support or encourage location, or, or, or something that would be stronger to encourage either the public school system or private schools to, to bring in more of a, a trade-oriented campus.
I can tell you that having worked where I do, it's been a little bit of a challenge to get employers to actually create apprenticeship programs. It's a little timely, but not anything out of what I would call, or. But not anything out of what I would call or extraordinary effort. We just completed an apprenticeship program for. Training drivers and it took about three weeks to get done. So at the um employer level is where that needs to start. I don't know if you would want to put language in there like that, but it should be. It should be encouraged to start these and it's really with the Department of Labor being in post falls. And the communication being what it was and um the staff being somewhat small. You know, challenging but easy. So I don't know how we can ramp that up for employers to actually engage with the state of I hope. To um build apprenticeship programs.
That that certainly is a phrase that we could get into this uh comprehensive plan somewhere, I think. When we were talking about businesses that are entrepreneurial, that are uh emerging technologies, we could also that phrase. That encourage apprenticeship programs, that'd be a simple addition that might. The other thing I was thinking, though, I know that that I've had conversations with people and I don't know how realistic it is, quite honestly, but that um. You know, the model of the Cootney Technical College.
Sure.
That serves post falls and cordillane. If something similar could be encouraged in Sandpoint, that would service Sandpoint waters ferry and Priest River. But I mean, when I, when we look at what's happening at Sandpoint now. If you want an electrician or plumber, you're a month out. But.
I think it's a good idea um when you look at the very specific trades in the area. To focus on training people for that, so they don't have to import from the outside. It might be well received. Okay, by the work community.
And again, this this plan, uh this comprehensive plan is not going to make that happen.
Sure.
Not make that happen, but just that it's in there. Um so and I maybe another statement that would say, I and again, we'd said support trade schools. Perhaps we could change that to encourage the development of trade schools. Um and I, I mean, that's slightly stronger verbiage, but.
Well, and we could have an additional objective dealing just with apprenticeship programs like work. With area businesses to create apprenticeship programs or something to that effect. Cause that's different than.
Right, I see two different things there that we that we could add.
Two different subjects, but.
Yeah, but closely related.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's great, I guess.
I think that there's a lot of benefits that employers don't understand about apprenticeships um is there are subsidies, programs, forum, grants, et cetera. That, you know, makes it um. An interesting topic.
So how does the city currently engage in any of that? Just out of curiosity, does anybody know? Uh I mean, does, do we have anybody that's a city staff person that would help? That would assist businesses if they were looking for grant money to start an apprenticeship program?
We don't currently have a staff person that would fill that.
I didn't think so, that's why I was just, yeah.
But it's getting businesses together and discussing it and discussing how to move something like that forward. Uh because the county is an economic development. Uh agency and that could certainly be something started at the county level that we are just encouraging to. Get started.
Yeah, I I know there's organizations in the area like um PAF, Panhandle Education Alliance, that they they had a uh. I think it was in the newspaper here in the last couple of months where they supported. Construction trades uh for. Uh high school kids go and build some sheds. Uh so, yeah, there's there's organizations in the area that are definitely looking at those opportunities.
And what I'm thinking is by having some statement like that in the comprehensive plan, it would accomplish two things. Maybe at some point it would be a a role that city staff would look at fulfilling. But the other thing too is when an application were to come to us is is to build a technical college on land that we have. Uh labeled as um industrial a suitable use for that.
Right.
Because it's what could help guide the actual. Kinds of applications that come to us perhaps.
Absolutely.
Didn't we used to have a Lewis and Clark satellite here?
Plan's still up at the uh.
We.
Sandpoint Center.
Right, and there there's still some coursework that goes on there. And I know initially when that first came in. There was uh um and I don't think it's still that way, but initially they were saying you could get your nursing degree in Sandpoint. Without having to go elsewhere, but I don't think that's still in place.
NIC is still in the Pine Street.
Correct, yeah, you can still take college classes from several.
Right.
Institutions up here. I don't know if there's degree programs yet, but.
I don't think so.
No, I don't, I don't think there is right now either, but may maybe there's some AA degrees, I don't.
I don't know, it's a good subject matter to explore.
But it's good to have into the comprehensive plan, so we encourage that from both public and private sources, yeah. Okay, are we clear on that?
Great. Any other comments on any four of these goals and objectives?
Um could we go back to the slide with the graph on it?
That one?
Yeah. Okay.
Did you have any questions? Or you just wanted to look at it again?
We're hearing strange things if you're wondering why we're behaving oddly.
Right, thanks.
Um actually, this just, sorry, thank you. This just came to me now, uh so I'm thinking uh out loud, unfiltered. Let me know what you all think. I mean, I'm I'm curious if another statement that might be interesting here is to encourage. Businesses to provide employee housing. We see Schweitzer doing it now. Um it might be both large and small scale. But again, when we're talking about the kind of businesses that we would like to attract, is it worth having a statement there that? That that's a legitimate role of business is to also assist with housing of their employees?
It may go more in the housing and neighborhoods chapter than the.
Okay, thank you.
And and I actually think we do.
Something like that.
About that, yeah.
Excellent.
I know that we heard one case sometime back ago where a local business person was. Trying to create employee housing for their employees. Encouraging.
And so it's a good idea, but we may see it elsewhere in the plan, not here. Excellent. Are we ready to move on?
I'll ask Amy. Amy, there were, there was two mentions of housing in. The chapter, just with its challenges that were as a struggle and I'm sorry, Miriam, but I have you muted so that we don't get the reverb. Um is that where we are going to address it will be the housing chapters or is? Do we leave it out considering that is a significant concern? For our economic development, knowing that employers are struggling to sometimes have people accept positions due to that. So we'll address it there. Do we, why is there nothing in our economic development? There was two significant mentions of housing with the the body of this.
In in the.
In chapter nine.
Yeah. I mean, we could cross reference, so I don't know, Miriam, what? What is your feeling? Does it belong both in economic development and housing or? Um. Is it, I mean, it's an, it's, it, you know, it's like, it's both. It goes like this, right? You can't have jobs without housing and can't have housing without, yeah, so. Um.
I think it's probably worth having that conversation next week, Amy, as part of your housing workshops. Um you're right, it is very linked with with the economic chapter here. And I would, I would say, depending on the feedback we get from the public. We can put it in two different places or have a cross reference uh to strengthen it. So it's not, it doesn't have to fit in one silo. I think we can find a place for it in multiple places, it, because it is an important issue.
Let me just segue it.
Good point. Okay, are we, are we ready to move on? It's yours. But Miriam, are you doing chapter eleven as well?
Uh yes, I am. Here we go. So chapter eleven is focusing on natural resources in hazardous areas. This is a pretty complex. Chapter, there's a lot to fit into it because it it encompasses so much, uh so many aspects of our natural environment. So um bear with me, I think, uh and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh we do have this draft out, but we're waiting a little bit on um providing some more context based on staff review. Is that correct?
Well, the the little.
You're fine.
Okay, the little creek. This um plan has been adopted. But then we also have a little sand creek recreation management plan. That is what is underway. Um and not yet finalized. So that's specific to recreation within the the watershed. But we do have also in this chapter a potential link to the urban forestry. Management plan that is also in the process of being updated.
Great, thank you. And there is a reference to the Bonner County Hazard Mitigation Plan that is pretty old. Um so de- depending on when that will be updated, um potentially uh this context might. Might need to see some fresh eyes in a couple of years anyway, so we'll, we'll see. Uh so service and groundwater resources uh. Same points within the Clarkport Penray uh watershed, which drains approximately twenty five thousand square miles from Montana, Idaho and Washington. So big, important area. Um and the the lake and Little Sand Creek serve as a supply for Sam Point's public water system. Uh it is a priority to maintain that high drinking water quality uh as we've, I mean. I think anywhere it would be important to maintain high drinking water quality, but it was um particularly called out in this plan. Terms of soils and ground cover, uh there are wetlands in the area that can present developmental challenges. As well as soils that uh become hard to to manage when when developing on them. Uh this kind of poor draining soils and high water table really create issues. Um for development and for wastewater systems. So um this is all important information to consider, especially as you look at this map kind of. Outside of the the grid and the urban area of standpoint. Um when we start expanding to the north, to the west, potentially. Um we're going to start thinking about more critically about what those soils are, the ground cover, the uh the wetland challenges. As we identify what potential appropriate uses would be in those those future areas. So um I want to maybe put a pin in some of this conversation. It, this sets up a lot for uh natural resources, but in hazardous areas. But it it also is very important to consider when we start looking at the land use and growth area chapter um in a couple months. So uh looking at the framework and intent of this chapter, uh clearly water access and shorelines are very important resources to to protect. The wildlife and forest era areas um up on the hillside. There is no designated open lands within the city, but uh the large city parks, wildlife corridors along Sand Creek. The the water access, um and certainly the urban forest is a valuable resource in town. In terms of hazardous areas, um clearly with our relationship with the Sand Creek and the lake. Areas are prone to flooding and wildfires in regards to the uh wild and urban interface. Kind of outside, west, north of us. Um other hazardous areas or hazards to consider are radon and earthquakes as well. And I I also put in here brown field sites. Um this is a consideration we also wanted to bring up in this chapter. As uh with the timber industry and some of the contamination of soils in these brownfield areas. Uh there are some restrictions to what can be dev- what can be developed. Um even with remediation in some of these brownfield areas. So for instance, uh residential uses would be restricted. Even with remediation. There is a map in there of view sheds. Um this is intended to just showcase that the Baldy Mountain water views and shoreline are very important. Views to maintain because you can see them from multiple areas in the, in town. Um there is, and I'll get to this, there is a an objective to identify and protect some of those view sheds. So this is uh an illustration of what we're really looking at. So it's an analysis of uh what you can see from each of these six points on the map. Um most of them are are. Excuse me, city parks along the shoreline. And then in terms of agriculture, agriculture is a state requirement to address for any Idaho comprehensive plan. Um so just to to cross our T's, dot our I's, we are saying there's no significant farmland in the city. And even within Bonner County, only six percent of soils is determined prime farmland. Um so really not a huge driver for uh for land use or for the economy in the area. So going into the goals and objectives here, goal number one is resource stewardship, but I would. Posit that some of the other goals are about stewardship too. So uh this one is particularly about natural resources landscapes um and how they're responsibly managed. So in particular, on the object, uh through the objectives, we are looking at. Uh protection of those important resources within the area of city impact specifically. Uh to be able to plan and and kind of protect those in perpetuity. Uh we want to encourage the flexibility of the division of land and citing of and design of buildings. But uh make sure that that does not negatively impact, uh that development doesn't negatively impact the environmental insensitive areas. Making sure that when we look at annexation, master plans and large scale developments, that those uh those planned areas can contribute. And connect to natural areas. The pursue, the pursuit of public acquisition or protection of specifically sensitive habitats. Um including wetlands, rep- riparian areas and shorelines. So that is um kind of public acquisition and public protection of those sensitive areas. Uh production of scenic resources, both water and mountain views, as I mentioned, uh by preserving watershed or views, view sheds, excuse me. And promoting land use and management practices to maintain and enhance that ecological function of the watershed and um sorry, both watersheds that we're looking at. Goal number two is water resource, and this is why I say we are stewards of that water quality as well. So looking at water quality and environmental value of the lakes and creeks, Seringa Creek water resources. Making sure that those are protected and enhanced. So objectives are looking at best management practices for stormwater to reduce pollutants and slow runoff rates. Looking at those uh natural riparian vegetation areas along the shorelines uh to preserve them and enhance them. Reduction of herbicide and fertilizer along the lakeshore line and creek corridors particularly. Uh reducing the sources of water pollution, so looking again at those best management practices for site design. And uh supporting efforts to identify and restore native aquatic habitat along Sand Creek, Seringa Creek and the lake. Air, light and noise pollution, so making sure that air quality is maintained and improved and light and noise pollution is minimized. Uh this is a a lot about um well. Air, light and noise pollution, but really making sure that you're collaborating with regional partners to improve regional air quality. Knowing that uh any efforts at Sam Point in uh implements needs to be in line and supported with regional efforts as well. Um and this is uh this objective A also mentions attracting clean industries. And I think we mentioned that a little bit in chapter nine of making sure that there are sustainable practices attracting clean industries as well. Promoting the use of low emission modes of transportation such as ride sharing, bicycle and walking in transit. And uh related to that is objective E at the bottom here. Um looking at the recommendations from the multimodal transportation plan, particularly at the railroad crossings. Uh and that goes with the noise pollution component. Encouraging incent incentivizing a new development to use energy and sustainability standards that reduce. Encouraging incentivizing a new development to use energy and sustainability standards that reduce energy demand um, and result in fewer air emissions. And then review, educate, and enforce codes for dark sky lighting compliance. This was, as I remember, a, a big idea a couple of years ago. Um, and it, it, like I said, some of these really require that regional compliance or coordination on it. Um, but when done correctly, can have huge impacts for, uh, light and noise reduction, pollution reduction. Uh, goal four is hazard protection, focusing on resiliency. Um, so hazard resilience of people, wildlife, natural systems, and property to withstand and recover from natural disasters and other major disturbances. Uh, this is not just focused on kind of those natural disasters, but can also try to set us up for resiliency in general. Um, so looking at flood events, uh, reducing the impacts of flood and the floodplain areas, evaluating opportunities to reduce that flood hazard area. Requiring defensible space around structures and mitigating those wildfire hazard areas. And you'll see there's a, a cross-reference with Bonner County Wildfire Protection Plan as well. Uh, where possible, discourage the transportation of hazardous substances through Sandpoint. This is, um, a little bit hard to achieve with the, the highways coming through town, um, but certainly, uh, using other routes as possible. Uh, coordinating with Bonner County and regional partners to implement those emergency management and mitigation programs. So again, that's a, that's a cross-reference back to that hazard mitigation plan. We need to educate and inform the residents about how mitigation impacts, uh, wildfires, winter storms, flood, earthquakes, and other high-risk hazards. So certainly an education component, yeah, as well as informing residents about the importance of radon testing. So I think that was my last goal for this chapter. I'll open the floor back up to any questions or comments on chapter eleven.
Questions, comments?
Um, I think I find this to be pretty interesting, um, all the content in it. And it does make me wonder why we don't have protections on like Little Sand Creek in the way of wildlife refuge, things like that. I don't know if the city's ever, you know, even approached that to protect that shoreline, um, and of course, green passage or whatever you call it. Have you ever heard anything about, anything like that?
I haven't, but that'd be interesting. I mean, um, connectivity is, you know, a big phrase when you look at wildlife management that and that might be a phrase where they're, you know, putting in here somewhere the city of Sandpoint would work with other jurisdictions to in improve connectivity for wildlife, um, movement.
Sure. Um, and as soon as you reach city limits and the development that are going on outside, that of course connect to our, the Sandpoint community, the development that's out there in that, you know, close to that watershed. Now Luke, what do you think?
Okay. This came up during recently in regards to the development, uh, and the plan with parks. There were challenges because so much of it's private property. So I'd be curious how we would do all that coordination. But it seems like a good idea, if you're using the right language to encourage and sustain wildlife, et cetera.
So it's essentially
Well, water protection.
Maintaining wildlife corridors.
Yeah, yeah, that and, you know, the water protection that this chapter talks about.
Yeah.
I know there's, I mean, really close to the city limits, there's very small in holdings of Bureau of Land Management land. Um, and how, and, and there's other jurisdictions too. There's kind of that old checkerboard pattern of how uh, public lands were, were, uh, divided up in, in the early days. Um, so that's all it is. And that's, that's what I'm seeing is set a statement that says we would work with any of those jurisdictions. But again, it's, this isn't any kind of, uh, uh, any kind of, uh, burden on private, uh, private property owners. It's just working with other, but I mean, we could work, we're willing, willing, uh, well, I mean, speaking of private landowners, I mean, Kinnick's Land Trust is a private landowner. I mean, that's, that's somebody that we'd work with on something like this, but.
You were gonna say. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think these are all great ideas, but I'm just thinking in my head, like, what tools does the city have to help foster these types of things, right? Is there opportunities for like low or no impact fees when somebody comes to and says, hey, I have a project that I want to do that meets one of your goals? Right? But you're, then you're hitting them with these like impact fees and these building permit fees and all these fees, right? And then it starts to make it less desirable to do certain things. Does the city have any tools that allows to foster these things, to encourage?
Like incentives?
Yeah.
Or economic development?
Yeah, yeah.
Because the impact fees are code. That's, that's
Right.
That can't be negated.
Right. I mean, that there are ways that, that the city could identify the, for these things, we would reduce these fees by a certain percent, but it wouldn't probably be across the board, but those, this is, is, is saying, again, these are kind of the broad statements. And then based on this, are there codes developed that put more teeth into it? Some of it, it's not really code language. But it's just acknowledging that a lot of this stuff, we have very little control over as one municipality and that stormwater doesn't follow jurisdictional boundaries. And so this brings up a lot of the regional nature of resource protection and hazard mitigation. But like, let's see.
Yeah, I think, I think my statements are more just in general, after listening both these chapters and the goals. Lot of great ideas, lots of great ideas, um, but the implementation of those ideas and how do we facilitate and encourage? Uh, I think financially incentives is going to be important of, of how, how to actually make this come to reality.
There was a couple of statements in there early, in the earlier chapter about incentivization. And I, I mean, and my thought again, this plan will partially help of the development of code.
Yeah.
Um, and so if that's in there that we would like to in, encourage more green space, encourage, uh, wetland protection, encourage whatever. That's all we can do with this plan. But then that means the city now has a, a tool where they could make code that says, well, our plan says that we want to encourage wildlife connectivity. So this developer wants to do this project and, and if he has more than the required green space, then that enhances the, the, and maybe there is a financial incentive to that, but it's certainly, but it hands are looking at that, that application. And, and it could be that the city then would develop. I'm not saying they would or they wouldn't, but they could. Because the plan is here, and the plan says we want to encourage that.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, so reading, um, chapter eleven, Amy, there is a lot, or there was some mention of, you know, preserving open space. And of course, that's what the major, or a lot of people have mentioned or would like to see. And I was just hoping that maybe we could add some language in there that, um, we need that balance between preserving open space for recreation or for whatever.
View sheds.
View sheds and, and keeping in mind that we still need viable land for future development. Type, I didn't see that in there. I just thought, I don't know if that would be helpful for people to have that in there for, uh, you know, yes, open space is great, but when we're in a housing crisis, do we want to just take a great piece of land for another park or another, uh, trail system when it could be used for some sort of future development?
Right, because doing that has costs.
Right, right.
Are, you are, the more land you're protecting for non-development puts scarcity on land for development, then it's driving up costs. Um, but I think, I don't know if that's where, where Miriam made the reference, that we don't really have any designated open space in the community. We have parks, but there's nothing really, no category of land called just this is open space for, you know, the
Well, I was thinking ACI. I was thinking of, you know, the future of of our area of city impact.
Right.
Um, those, those areas. Um, and then also, I also noted in that chapter that, um, the design competition was mentioned. And I was wondering if the code changes are going to be made prior to the end of the design competition.
I don't anticipate, I mean, I, uh, uh, the updates, the code will be ongoing. Um, but I would say the downtown waterfront design competition is going to inform code changes in that area. So we wouldn't do that in advance of that competition.
Because we had that one meeting down there, um, by Gunny's Alley, uh, a few months back and discussing the code change and with the ideas of our, um, master plan, parks plan.
Right.
Um, so I didn't know if we were gonna go ahead, if the city was planning to try to get those code changes in before the di- design competition or not, but likely no.
Those Sand Creek code changes were adopted. The ones, wherever we talked about, there was a whole section of if it's property of budding Sand Creek. And that if you, if it's any, oh, I'm not gonna remember the word. Um, you know, like piers or
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Docks, those all have to go through a conditional use process that acknowledges the Sand Creek is a critical, um, element, environmental element. Um, so that code change is in place. I mean, um, how that gets adjusted or enhanced through this whole design process, likely there'll be changes to it. Um, but those protections are in place now.
And one thing I'd add to that, I know an earlier version of this, when you specifically water quality, and I think this was something, something came up as relates to Sand Creek. Earlier wording, wording had said something like would not significantly degrade water quality, which means it could slightly degrade water quality, but the new verb it says will protect or enhance. So it could not make it worse. It has to keep it at least where it is, and we would encourage it to make it even better.
Right.
So to Ben's point earlier about incentivizing business, it seems like that would be fundamentally appropriate for the city to offer. But I don't know, um, if the city can actively do that, or does it create a conflict of interest for some reason? Or do they, does the city have programs that incentivizes businesses to come?
We don't have specific programs. We work with the county economic agency. Or we, I mean, really, our only in such, in the urban renewal areas is we use taxing, financing for infrastructure assistance. Um, but we don't have any grants or incentives that we offer businesses currently. Uh, you know, and, and as Miriam, um, noted, we do have the opportunity zone, but that is a federally designated boundary, and it's basically my limited understanding of opportunity zones is it is an opportunity for someone to take capital gains from sale of property somewhere else invested in a, um, opportunity zone, and then they have a reduced taxes over time. So it, it encourages invest, it encourages investment in these areas, but that's not anything we have any role in. And we didn't even identify, it was the state that identified it for us. But, you know, things that communities look at, it's, you know, fast track permitting, or there's those kinds of actions that communities take. To try to reduce costs by shortening the amount of time a development has to go through. But, so there are, there are plenty of things that can. We don't have an economic development department or an economic development office.
Or person.
Right. I mean, primarily the city administrator handles the economic development.
So there isn't, when, so when you read these words where it says encourage, or, you know, how yeah, I understand they're, they're somewhat fluff words, but how is, what's the how? How are we going to encourage them? How are we going to uh, track these businesses? How is this, you know, going to take place?
And, and Miriam, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about, so this, these chapters all have goals and objectives. And, and these are very kind of broad terms, but then you get to the point of how you actually implement this. And there will be a whole implementation chapter that says, okay, so we have this objective or this goal of water quality. Now what specific actions are we gonna do? So if it's talking about water quality, the specific implementation action would be update the stormwater management plan to include XYZ. And then a timeframe on that. Uh, and I know, Miriam, you had, um, you've started kind of trying to frame that already.
Yes, so we do have a working document that has that table of those action items that will go into the implementation chapter. It is a working document. And so every time that we go through each of these chapter revisions, we're pulling out ideas that would go into that, that are more, um, action oriented, that is like a future study, a future code rewrite, a future program that needs to be to be developed. Um, and so those ideas were, we're pulling directly into this working implementation table. And, uh, Amy, we might talk about sharing this in its draft form with the commission um, in their future meetings, just so that they can see how this is going to be translated, because that is something that we will also want your feedback on uh, and a close eye and, and review on, because those are kind of really setting up that action plan for how the town is going to be working toward achieving all of this.
One thing, I was just thinking of when you talked about more teeth in it, and just because it's right here in front of me where it says encourage reduction of herbicide, et cetera. I, I noticed earlier there was, and I don't remember the goal, but I mean, uh, adding more teeth to a statement like that would be to say enforcement of existing, um, rules and regulations on the application of fertilizers and herbicides. And there was another thing earlier on, I remember what it was, but it, it specifically mentioned enforcement. That that would be a way that makes it less fluffy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supporting Miriam on the substance. You know, these are great. They're written well, some, you know, minor conflict information, as you pointed out. But in the end, they have to have substance. Somebody's got to support it.
And do we have the ability as a city, city staff, uh, you know, programs, do we have that ability to support all? And I know this is a 20-year
Yeah.
plan, but, uh, there's just
There's a lot.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was trying to get to. There's just so much stuff. So how do we cover, you know, i- it, it does read well. But what's the percentage of these goals being attained, these goals and objectives?
And, well, I, I think it has to have a gatekeeper, keepers, you know, maybe it's a committee.
Well, it's part of the this, the city, excuse me, also, Mr. Chairman, was, they, they had their strategic plan, which was a more recent adoption that lined out a five-year vision for where they were going, which was really cool, because not very many other Idaho places have the strategic plan, at least in our region. So that has more of a short side instead of the broad swath that is traditional within the contract. That was 2019.
And I think, Fonda, could you chime in a little bit? Because I think you, you had a good overview of it last time of a comprehensive plan needs to be comprehensive because it is giving direction to so many different things that the city does.
Yes. So your comprehensive plan is your overarching guiding visionary document that is not intended to provide all of the details of, um, execution or enforcement. Um, your execution and enforcement comes in your codes. And your comprehensive plan, of course, your, your goals and objectives speak to your master plans. So you have your transportation master plan. You have your parks master plan. You have your stormwater master plan. So you're, what you guys are looking at in these chapters are, are lofty. overall arching visionary goals. That's what they're intended to be. What you want to make sure as you go forward and start utilizing these goals and objectives to drive your decision-making with code changes and your plans, which are already set in place, is that you don't go awry of these goals and objectives in that other decision-making. So that's where your checks and balances and your accountability comes into place. I know it feels like we want to take all the bites of the apple at one time. But, but you can't. And I, I hope, these are great conversations. And I think these conversations are going to be very fruitful as you go forward beyond just the comprehensive plan finalization and this piece. But I hope you will continue to remember that this is your, your guiding document that you're required to have under the local land use planning act. Because it's, it's got usually a 20-year, well, 10 to 20-year shelf life. It's, it's guiding your, your city code and, and your other policies and procedures and your decision-making along the way. That's why when you get land use applications that come before you, and we talk about, is this application inconsistent with a comprehensive plan? Or is it substantially in conformity with a comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan isn't designed to give you a place to go and check the boxes of compliance, compliance, compliance. It's just intended to be that visionary document that keeps you from getting completely outside of the scope of what the community had at that point in time as a vision for development within your, within your city. Is that helpful? Amy, was that what you were hoping for?
Yep, exactly. Thank you.
Yes.
The other thing I think I would add to that is that it, it is a visionary plan. And as you said, it doesn't make the, the, the checkboxes. But it does guide the city to make those checkboxes, right? I mean, so we don't do that here, but what we do here guides somebody somewhere else to actually make those checkboxes that we look at later.
Well, and it, it will guide you too. So one of the things I, if any of you talk to me privately, not in a meeting, and you talk about the city, what's my response? You are the city. So you are the city. City council is the city. The staff is the city. Jennifer, the mayor, we are all the city. So it's guiding all of us that are actively participating in any decision-making or policymaking related to the city. So some of these decisions will come back before you and you're, you have a responsibility to determine whether or not what's in front of you runs awry of your existing comprehensive plan. I mean, look at how many times we've had applications and you guys have just rustled and wrangled with the fact of but our comprehensive plan isn't updated yet. And so as you work on this right now, I hope, one, you will appreciate this opportunity. Because not every commission gets the opportunity to work on a comprehensive plan. They're just stuck with whatever one is in front of them at the time. And so I hope you really grapple, and you are, and revel in this opportunity. And then fast forward to, okay, so what if I have an application in front of me that runs awry of these goals and objectives? I mean, you are going to be the commission at the end of this that is most intimately aware of the goals and objectives. Some commission down the road, three years from now, four years from now, five years from now, is just going to be reading whatever you were intimately involved in. You're going to know how it came about, why it was important, where it was generated, what the community engagement was that led to these goals and objectives. And that is super valuable. So I know I added a lot to kind of what your comment was, but we are all the city and we are all in this opportunity, which is enormous, to be involved in what this comprehensive plan is going, or these chapters, not really the whole thing, but these chapters are going to look like at the end of this process and still have the opportunity to evaluate applications as they come before you against the goals and objectives and policies that you just helped adopt and for, for everyone to use from this point going forward. That's a lot of words, but I'm very passionate about comprehensive plans.
And I'm glad you are.
I'd love that we are the city as a slogan.
There we go.
That could be a song.
Mr. Chairman, can we look at or Miriam's goal three, please? I'm just seeking some clarification. When I read the first bullet, A, collaborate to improve regional air quality by supporting pollution mitigation strategies and attracting clean industries. The first thing that comes to my mind, hopefully easily dissuaded at times, are we making any type of implication that the industries that are here are not clean? That, that's a, it's an interesting choice of verbiage. So I'm open to thoughts.
If you I certainly did not take it that way at all when I read it, but.
I've recently been engaged with many conversations with people and I've discovered that we need to be exceedingly careful with our words.
Oh, yes.
So.
Well, it's, it's an interesting question. And because the discussion on air quality, and we know when we have poor air quality, it's because of wildfires. So the improving regional air quality by supporting pollution mitigation, it isn't the pollution that's causing it. It's the fires.
Which is the pollution.
That is, I mean, yeah.
Right, but it is, I think to Luke's point, we're not saying there are polluting industries that are creating the biggest problem for us. But then, but, and it's not saying that, but then also attract clean industries.
Yeah, I'm with John. I didn't, I didn't read it that way, implying that we have icky air.
Right. Would it be cleaner, clearer, this, the intent of this, if that actually was two bullets instead of one? That improving air quality by supporting mitigation strategies? And then a whole, it says attracting clean energies, that take, is that less onerous? I don't know. I'm just. But I, I didn't take it that way, but it's interesting. Other thoughts? I do have a couple of other thoughts elsewhere on this, but before I move on, I wanted to see if there's any else.
No, thank you.
No, thank you. One of the things that, that I was interested in looking at this under C predominantly, that certainly goes along with all this, encouraged, that's good, incentivized, now we are talking something that might save money, new developments to employ. One of the things that, that personally I would like to see added there is the incentivization perhaps for neighborhood, neighborhood scale electrical generation. Meaning if someone were to put in a development and they want to have rooftop solar on every home, that that would be something that would be incentivized. And so to say neighborhood scale electrical generation or.
Well, and again, in some communities, it makes sense to say that as municipality, because you have municipal utility. And we don't have a municipal utility. So we would be working with Avista to implement, you know, so it's almost unless we put in our codes that we are now requiring that X percent of houses have solar panels, or you have to go green, you have to, so what this is could get to in a implementation table is encourage or require green building standards.
And I'm going nowhere near that step. I mean, what I'm saying is nowhere near that step. It's just saying that if a developer wanted to put rooftop solar on his homes, the city would encourage that and perhaps they would incentivize that. I mean, already it's incentivized by Avista. Right now, in the state of Idaho, they're going through some new regulations on how are we going to incentivize people who want to put rooftop solar on, and they do it by the rates that they charge for when you sell back to the utility. But I, I don't see this as being anywhere near requiring a certain percentage to have it. It's just if somebody wants to do it, incentivize it.
Green neighborhood or
Yeah.
We not
Well, that's one of the main things we
Sorry, do we not see that already built into this language? Where it says encourage and incentivize new development that employ energy and sustainability standards that reduce energy and demand? I think all of those different varieties of ways to do that are inherently built right into this language al- already.
I would also maybe add that we might have a place for that in a chapter that you haven't yet seen. So we do have the public facilities, services and programs, I think is the name of the chapter eight, which is when we talk about providers of utility, energy, other services. And so that might also be a place that we could start infusing some of those alternative energy sources into.
More detailed options in that chapter.
Right.
Yeah, you give us one other comment that I would make on that too, is, and again, whether it's here or there or elsewhere. When we look at a plan that's supposed to last for 20 years and when we see our country moving in some areas rapidly and some areas slowly to an electrical, to an electrified economy. 20 years from now, when electric cars will be far more common than they are now. Do we want to see something here that would also? We've seen it in some, in some things that have come before us already, where developers are planning on electrical chargers, electrical car charging stations. Is that worth mentioning specifically here or elsewhere? For discussion.
I agree with Fonda. So we kind of reversed on our two from A to C. I believe it's in there with C, as I read that. Because who knows where we're going to be in 20 years.
If we're going to be.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you might, you might add to be promote the use of low emission modes of transportation such as electric vehicles, ride sharing, bicycle walks and transit, you know?
I'm thinking a couple of those things are specific enough and impactful enough, they're worth mentioning specifically, but.
It's a good call. We might be riding scooters around, I don't know. Some people do.
Hoverboards, man.
I don't know if any, any of you have followed the promotion of the electric vehicles in other states around us, but that took off like wildfire there. And they immediately started drafting codes and incentivizing new development, including multiple charging stations for vehicles. Only they forgot to check with the power company and crashed the power grid, power grid in multiple locations. So again, there's so many parts and pieces that have to weave together and work together that though their motives were pure, the practicality of executing what they had put in place and offering even the incentivization backfired because the power grid couldn't handle what they had actually asked it to do. That's just a side note.
Right. I know, and that's, I mean, looking in the news, obviously, that the, in areas that have been more aggressive with trying to encourage that switch. They say the single biggest barrier is functioning charging stations. They simply don't, I mean, they were built and they have broken or something. But that that transition would happen faster if there was more availability to functioning charging stations. But yes, at any rate.
Well, as we see EVs become more and more popular, I think that when you start to look at it as a viable resource, it's going to start costing more money than you think. Because if you have charging stations, are they free now or not? Do you have to pay? I think it's always appropriate to plan for the future and with this with this electric vehicle thing and cases that we've heard and people that say they're going to put them in. You know, I, I do support it, but I can also see where it'll be exploited eventually. Like $10 charge. I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't, and I don't see that as exploitation. I just see that as natural commerce. It's just, should it be free? No, it shouldn't be free. I, I would think you would have to pay for that like you pay for other fuels.
I, I don't know if charging stations have price tags attached to them or not.
I would, I would advise, I'm working on projects in Washington State that the charging stations for commercial have, you have to pay for.
Yep.
And, and even states are having electric companies add charges because they're not going, they're not getting their road revenue for gas. So they have to get that revenue somehow. So when you, you know, you swipe your card to charge, you are also paying a tax to the state that replaces what you would be paying if you were buying gas.
And a gas tax.
Yeah, because we still have to maintain the roads and they haven't come up with a different mechanism. Yeah.
It will, and some places have, there are some places that have to work through that. Okay, so how do we get our road revenue through taxation on vehicles that don't buy gas?
Right, so, right.
That is. Thoughts?
About e-bikes, are there charging stations for e-bikes? Is that a thing?
There are e-bike, you know, like bike share programs that have e-bikes and those you have to, you know, you put them back on their stand and they get charged.
Yeah.
But I think you can just plug in at home, can't you? You don't need a special adapter really for an e-bike, but.
I was just thinking if you're tooting around town and all of a sudden your battery is low, I don't have any bikes, so I'll never get one.
If you're biking around town, you can pedal yourself.
But I was just curious if that's a thing. Sorry, I digressed.
Good discussion. Anything else on any part of that? Presentation? Well, thank you, Miriam. Appreciate it greatly. Looking forward to all the other chapters.
Yes. So speaking of next steps, this is what we are tentatively looking at. So again, a reminder to attend the housing and neighborhood workshops that Amy will be leaving, leading next week. And then tentatively, we'll be looking at chapter eight, mid-November. Chapter five and, and four in December. So that's housing in neighborhoods and land use and growth. We'll be starting to think about critically what, what those future land use categories, what the map looks like and what the policy should be to support that. So that's what you have to look forward to coming into the holiday season.
And we, we didn't put anything in for November 1st, because it comes so quickly after the workshop. But potentially, Miriam, we could talk kind of through the implementation chapter. And kind of where it is, where, how it's organized, we, you know, we could do a brief overview of that without having to churn out another chapter.
And I, I don't know, Miriam, if maybe you could help the commission understand sort of how their input at this point is facilitating and guiding the process. So it might be helpful if you can give them just a couple minute explanation, because they, you had community engagement. We, you know, have this giant pause. Now we've sort of revisited community engagement. We have these workshops, we have multiple chapters. We're bringing language to the commission and they're providing a lot of good feedback. How does the feedback like they've provided you tonight get incorporated into future drafts that they might see? Would you, would you be okay sort of walking them through that?
Absolutely. Good question. So it is kind of an in-between phase, but every comment that we hear from this commission in, in past, past updates to you and tonight will be directly reflected in the next version of this, of these chapters. So in many circumstances, we were updating the chapters based on other recent planning efforts that had occurred since we put the comprehensive plan on pause. So in some ways, the, the updates to these chapters already reflect more recent public engagement and kind of your understanding as a commission of where we want to land on some of these issues because of those other adopted plans. For the, the other chapters, like the housing in neighborhoods chapter, the land use and growth chapter, we have decided that because they're so sensitive and because growth is happening at the pace it is we're seeing today, it is probably worth coming back to the, the public to workshop through. it is probably worth coming back to the, the public to workshop through some of these ideas. So that is one piece that we'll be adding. Before you see those chapters, we're going to go back to the public to workshop some of the, what, what our understanding had been a couple of years ago and where we'd landed then and reaffirm that vision and those goals and objectives with the community. So, uh, the drafts that you guys will, will see and have seen so far that we've produced should, should be the, the best and brightest understanding of where the community sees themselves and where we want to go into the future. Um, the next steps of this is pulling them all together to make sure that they speak together, that they work well together. Um, there's not discrepancies or, um, uh, policies that that don't work to, that kind of butt heads, um, and that'll result in that full formatted comprehensive plan. And you've seen chapters one and two formatted, so you have a sense of how that might look. But then we'll pull those chapters into a, a full document for you to review and for the public to review. So again, we'll go back to the public to, to make sure that they, they give their thumbs up and, um, can review that full document as a complete complete document moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Um, in regard to next week's meetings, the twenty sixth and twenty seventh, twenty six is here, twenty seven is at Tango.
Yes.
Um, it's not a required, but only a drop in for us.
And you can come for as short a period or as long of a period as you want. We'll be here. Um, we'll have information, you know, we'll have the zoning maps, we'll have information on current codes, we'll have information on the previous engagement related to housing and neighborhoods and what were the comments at that time. Um, we'll have been, you know, we'll do, there had been a vision preference survey on different housing types. Well, what I'm going to have pictures of, I mean, we know we've had a lot of discussion on ADUs, have actual pictures of the many ADUs that we already have in the community. You know, what's the, what's the data on them? How many of we had? We've had sixty, sixty, eighty US built since twenty sixteen, I think, and just so people understand the things that are happening already. Uh, what is original lot of record mean? What does that look like? Why are some of the, you know? So information on what is the code, what is, what is, what's development in the pipeline? Where are we already have development? So a map showing, you know, the map that I showed you a few meetings ago, we've got two big projects on US two, you know, university places going, we have these other subdivisions. Um, so a visual and then just some, uh, questionnaires probably similar to questions that were, um, questions that were asked previously, just see if there's any change.
Question for you on that, uh, do we have to publish something that says like at these housing and neighborhood meetings, there may be a quorum of the planning and zoning commission, but no business will be conducted or?
I, I know I will post something, but Fonda, is there going to be an issue at these workshops if we have a quorum present of commissioners?
I was advised to try not to have a quorum, but if you do, I, I, I mean, it's been posted as a public meeting. Everybody knows it's a workshop, which means there's no decision making happening. And so I would just make sure that if you have four or more commissioners there at one time, that you stay separated, don't look like you're having a conversation with four of you at once. Um, but because it is already posted, it's not gonna, going to be a problem. And this is all legislative action anyways, this is policymaking. So just, um, be cognizant of, of perception and, and don't have four or more of you in any one location having a conversation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Question for Amy, is there also going to be pictures of alternative types of housing as I get asked about? Cottage style, tiny home, whatever else is in the pipeline that I have no idea or my backyard.
Well, that, that and, uh, you know, I mean, actually our code allows quite a lot and we have one cottage development under construction. Uh, what we'll probably do is like have the site planned for that. This is, this is what, this is what a cottage development looks like. Um.
Is that the one of the vision?
Yeah. Um, but yeah, or and just, you know, so you've got original lots of records. So if these twenty-five foot lots and you have these houses that have to have five foot setbacks. How do we get it so that we can get townhouses and actually maybe improve efficiency of land use by having true townhouse lots? Um, so it's, it's, you know, what is, what? If, you know, we could show a picture of the Culvers Crossing Big House. It's six units, but it looks like a house. Or, you know, what do different multifamily styles look like? How many units are in it? Um, but it, it is the, this, you know, it's the more what is acceptable then? Oh, I don't want that. Once, once it's proposed, that's what we're trying to get out of. What should we be putting in our codes and, and allowing versus having something and then people, you know, and, and at what should our threshold be for a conditional use permit? If, right now it's seven unit, eight units and you have to go for a CUP. And is eight units really a large development? Is it, you know? Yes, we want public input, but there is the uh, tendency to not want it when it's close to you, but it's fine. We need it, but not next to me.
One more for you. On the website of the current comp plan, it says that the ACI discussion is going to be done in the fall. We have about we're halfway through.
And it's my understanding, we have not started ACI discussions yet.
Do, do we have a, I'm talking about ADUs, do we have an update on the requests that we've made to the city council regarding the?
Yes, city council said to come to have a public hearing within six months because we wanted to do these workshops. And there were the other, um, we'd asked for additional time because there were the other accessory building code revisions. We want to make sure we don't make one change without addressing all accessory building changes at one time.
Seems like a very long time. That seems like a very long time.
Well, at most it's six months is what was asked for. Because again, we need to focus on getting the comprehensive plan done.
I'll, I'll be interested to understand, I guess, when the comprehensive code is done, plan is done. Just seems like we're, um, slowly moving along and our ability to impact change is slow. So I would, I would hope that we can facilitate some updates here in a more expeditious manner versus we've been talking about this now for a year. And I don't feel like we've really had a chance to really change anything. My feelings.
Well, I appreciate the process because there's a process that needs to be followed. Um, and then there's priorities as well.
Yeah, but I think people want change. And with change, you need to take action. Yeah, we have not had a chance to take action.
You also have to remember you have a limited amount of, of staff that is stretched very, very thin.
Well, I'd also say that there's a general consensus amongst the community that is very hard to do anything in standpoint. So we talk about development and the need to facilitate development. But I would say then to develop community, anybody who can avoid doing development in city of standpoint avoid doing developments to the standpoint because it is very challenging. I have joined this council, this commission to try to change that. And been on it for going on a year in January and haven't balanced maybe to really impact any kind of change. I guess I'm just sharing some conversation that we all probably share that we want to make it better for our community and, uh, understand that there's a process. But, uh, we do need to start to take action.
Baby steps.
I think it would mean more meetings, which I'm fine with. I mean, I, I think that the meetings are set for every two weeks for a reason. Um, but if there's a cancellation of a certain subject, can we change it? To help reach what you're talking about as far as expediting, which might be a little aggressive, but.
Well, more meetings means also more work for staff.
Right.
So, uh, an overworked and over, you know, uh, uh, challenged staff with all the work that they have already. So I don't know if more meetings would be the answer. I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, we, we have directive from council. As planning and zoning, there's an action plan. There's a, there's a master plan as to the workflow. And you all work at the request and direction of council and the mayor. And staff is also working for all of you. And so we can't, at this commission level, work any faster than council gives us direction and permission to work either. We're bound by applications, which is, you know, applications and, and zoning process and um, application decision-making is completely different from policymaking. But we are, our hands are a little bit tied by the direction that council gives us as to how fast we can move. And I know that's probably frustrating, but it, it is still there directive.
I would say that we ask them to move faster.
I'm not asking you, go ahead.
I, I guess I would.
Well, we've already asked and we've been told wait six months.
The commission to understand that once a development leaves your table, it does not leave staff tables. So after it leaves here, it goes to city council. That takes time. It goes to development agreements. That takes staff time. Um, so and I, I, you know, I've been here as long as you have Commissioner McGrann and we have actually seen a lot of development come through in the past nine months. Um, and actually our building permit numbers, we for residential building permits are twice, we're at twice what we were this time last year. So we at the staff level are busy. Um, and it's, I do not believe that not changing the ADU code to allow two bedrooms has stopped ADUs because we have continual applications for accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with the, the amount of workloads up that's out there. I'm just, I'm using that as a microcosm example, right? Of our ability to impact change in code. Yes, there's a lot of building permits and all applications that are going on, but the change in code to help facilitate and better the opportunities for the development. Uh, we have not, um, had a chance to do that.
What's that saying? Rome wasn't built in a day? Right? Rome was not built in a day.
Delayed the process.
City council made a very clear directive that the number one priority was the comprehensive plan because it does give direction to code. So if you start changing code without any, your, your new policies in place, you're going to have to go back and change them. So, um, we've had to balance uh, administering and processing development with trying to get that comprehensive plan done. But believe me when I say no one would like updated codes more than staff. We would rather just skip the whole plan and go right to seeing what we think needs to be done with, with codes. But to find his point, the plan is giving us our legal basis for what we do in codes and impact fees and all kinds of policies that the city is undertaking.
Yeah, well, that's a great point.
It might be a little early to tell. Um, in standpoint here, but is the city processing less uh, building permits or seeing less building permits coming through the door because of our economic state?
The, I mean, that, not that we're seeing, we're seeing like we've literally had twice as many building permits this year, year to date as last year. So if you look just at the early phases of university place and you see how many foundations, you know, there's all kinds of piles of dirt out there. So all those foundations are going in. Um, and then the infrastructure for boyer farm space two is going in. Um, so we aren't seeing, I mean, we're not seeing the development walking through the door every single day like we were early spring, but that's part of the time of year as well. You know, people are now thinking what they're going to start moving forward early in the spring to get going on. But no, we have not seen a slowdown.
Fonda, what was that that you were saying?
Uh, I don't remember what I was saying just a minute ago, but I will say, um, I'm saddened to hear that there's commentary in the development community about this being a slow process. I work in a variety of jurisdictions all across the northern part of this state. And Sandpoint has the most efficient and quick processing system of any of them that I work in. We move applications through the city of Sandpoint faster than any other jurisdiction. And I'm probably one of the few that has the personal experience of working in multiple jurisdictions from a land use perspective. So I'm thankful, Commissioner McGrann, that you were willing to share that tonight. So that we could respond in a manner that hopefully gives each and every one of you a little bit of um, opportunity to respond when those frustrations are brought to you. Uh, with regards to the fact that there is a process. But this, this jurisdiction in particular is extremely efficient, even in the absence of a planning director for as long as we were, were missing a planning director. Um, and God bless Amy for, for the systems and efficiency she's built in since she's been here. Applications continued to move. Public hearings were held. Um, everybody stepped up to the plate and filled gaps and, and kept development moving when it could have come to a complete standstill. And you're seeing the fruit of that now with double the building permit applications. I mean, that is the fruit of planning continuing to move during a time when it could have come to a screeching halt for lack of personnel and it didn't. So I'm appreciative that you brought that up. I didn't, I was not personally aware that there was that uh, belief or attitude in the development community. And I, I talked to a number of developers out there that develop in the same jurisdictions that I work in. And so I hope that we can give you a little bit more information through this process to, um, kind of put some of that a little bit to rest. Everybody gets frustrated and concerned and every developer wants their project to move faster than it realistically can. But this jurisdiction in particular runs like a well-oiled machine and has continued to do so in the absence of key personnel. So I just, I can't give enough kudos to the staff here. And I hope that you guys will do the same in the community. And I hope you can walk away from tonight and appreciate that. That some things do have to take it, have to be put in their proper order on a priority list for legal purposes and just sheer manpower. There, that's my speech.
Well, that's good to know.
And I'm sure it won't help your frustrations, but I've been on the commission for four years and we were working on the comprehensive plan when I started. But we had a pandemic and we had a lot of vacancies in staff. But, alright. Any other questions at this time for our presenters, city staff? Well, with no further business before the commission then, this meeting is now adjourned at seven nineteen. Thank you all for being here.